Uh, yeah, that's right. It was. We didn't have audio.
I know. You can go to YouTube playback as I watched it earlier today. I think she's having issues. I think Andy got it.
I can't.
Okay, we're good.
Oh, I see.
Creasy.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. The United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to October 7th, 2024, um, in council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call, please?
Clinker?
Here.
Nargie?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Wies?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Allersmeyer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Snyder? For and present.
Thank you very much. The first order of on the on the agenda today is to suspend our public meeting. I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Clinker.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second to suspend the meeting. All in favor, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. We do have the public meeting portion of our meeting this afternoon, this evening, uh, for the following ordinances, 2024 dash 41.
An ordinance vacating a portion of 17th Street in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Ordinance 2024 dash 42.
An ordinance for an additional appropriation of American Rescue Plan Grant Fund number 1760.
And resolution 2024 dash 24.
A resolution of the common counsel of the city of Lafayette, Indiana, approving the exchange of real poverty.
Thank you. So ordinance 2024 dash 41, vacating a portion of 17th Street. Is there any public comment for this particular ordinance? That is 24, 2024 dash 41. Any public comments? Any public comments? Hearing and seeing none, moving on to ordinance 2024 dash 42. Any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing and hearing none, moving on to ordinance 2024 dash 24.
On tonight's.
Resolution, I'm sorry, 2024 dash 24. Thank you. Any public comment? Any public comments? Seeing and hearing none, let's move on and reconvene.
Move to reconvene.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second to reconvene the meeting. All in favor, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Moving on to approval of the meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2024. Mr. Reynolds.
Move accept the meet meetings as presented.
Ms. Eileen Hessian.
Say.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, seeing most saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Meeting minutes have passed. Moving on.
Presentation of disposal of claims, they are none. Presentation of petitions and communications, they are none. Um, reports on city offices on file in the city clerk's office, fleet maintenance monthly July and August, renew department monthly July and August, and waterworks department monthly July and August.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I would like to remind the public that all this information is available on our website, which we expend a lot of money and time maintaining. So I encourage anybody and everybody who's curious to visit our website and or visit Madam Clerk Monday through Friday. Thanks. All right, we've got a very busy agenda today. So moving on for ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2024 dash 41, an ordinance vacating a portion of 17th Street in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2024 dash 41 on second and final reading.
Second.
Motion and seconds. Mrs. Counselor.
This, uh, where you are in second reading tonight, this ordinance, uh, addresses clearing of title for some of our old railroad corridors. Specifically, this is located north of Salem Street in in response to Councilman Brown's comments, uh, last month about not necessarily being able to visualize the location. I did provide each of you, uh, my wonderful map, uh, that I put together to help you, help you visualize this. Um, the reason we're vacating this today is, uh, we recently employed T-Bird, uh, to do a survey, and it was discovered that the 17th Street right of way has never been officially vacated. It is grass. There's no road there. Um, so we are now seeking approval to vacate that right of way to resolve those title issues as we pave the way for potential future redevelopment projects.
Thank you, counselor. Any comments or questions from the council?
Thank you so much.
I tried. Nicely done.
So Jackie, that'll allow like, that's where the buffer yard will start then, right at the new area? Like if whatever developed there, whatever it might be.
Whatever, this this will now be part of the remaining land and part of the lot, correct?
Gotcha.
Very good. Any comments or questions from the council? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024 dash 42.
An ordinance for an additional appropriation of American Rescue Plan Grant Fund number 1760.
Ms. Williamson.
I move here and approve ordinance 2024 dash 42 on second and final reading.
Second.
Thank you, counselor.
All right. Again, we're here on second reading of this ordinance. Uh, this ordinance does authorize an additional appropriation of funds from our American Rescue Plan funds. It reallocates approximately 4.5 million in previously appropriated but unspent funds and adds a new appropriation of approximately 3.9 million for a total appropriation of $8,506,321. Uh, these funds will be allocated, uh, to the previously identified projects, uh, such as the Glik Wealth Field Improvements, the Weah Ridge Storage Tank, the Service Area 11B Utility Expansion, as well as additional, uh, trail and paving projects.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the council? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
All right, moving on to ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 2024 dash 43, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to Tippecanoe County, Indiana.
Mr. Clinker.
Move here ordinance 2024 dash 43 on first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. It's very good. Counselor.
Okay, uh, this ordinance offers amendments to our Tippecanoe County Unified Zoning Ordinance. Uh, these amendments were approved 15-0 by the Area Plan Commission on September 18th and are now before you for approval. Uh, there are three main changes proposed in this amendment. The first one relates to agricultural rental halls. Uh, the amendment clarifies the definition of agricultural rental hall. Currently, there is confusion about what constitutes a public event of which they are limited to four a year if you have the zoning classification. This amendment clarifies that private events are limited to invite invited guests or those with ticket reservations, while public events don't require invitations or reservations. Uh, charging a fee at the door without requiring an invitation or reservation would still be considered a public event. So it is hoped that this will clarify some of that confusion with regard to those rental halls. Uh, the second amendment has to do with pet stores and pet brokerages. Uh, the amendment adds a definition for a pet store and a pet brokerage. A pet store sells pet supplies and services but cannot sell cats or dogs, though they can partner with a shelter or other rescue agency for adoptions. However, on the other hand, a pet brokerage buys, sells, or offers cats and dogs at wholesale or retail. Pet stores would be continued to be allowed in most commercial zones as they are now. Pet brokerages, however, would only be permitted by special exception in I-2 zoned areas. Uh, since there are a few, very few vacant I-2 properties currently exist, a new pet brokerage would likely require rezoning and a special exception, uh, allowing for additional local input on those. Uh, and this is something that the commissioners actually requested, uh, that APC look into in response to, uh, the state preempting our ban on retail, uh, pet stores. So they obviously preempted that, but we still do have control over our zoning regulations. So this is a way for us to still have some, uh, public input on on those locations. The final amendment has to do with amusement and recreation services. Uh, it expands where they can be located. Currently, uh, the UZO allows outdoor amusement and recreation services in agricultural and agricultural wooded zones by special exception, but not indoor ones. This amendment would allow both indoor and outdoor amusement and recreation areas in ag and ag wooded zones by special exception. Uh, this change accommodates businesses like indoor agricultural venues in rural areas without requiring rezoning to commercial or industrial zones. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just have one real quick one. I was very confused on the, um, the wedding venues or the venues. Does that help them or actually hurt them?
Well, it depends on what you mean mean by that. So that.
Ability to rent more.
Well, it will limit, and and I'm going to say that part of the confusion is is that for, uh, exception for the public events, because you're limited to four, four a year. And so I think that there's been some confusion about what's a private event, what's a public event, and this is meant to clarify. No, these fall in a category of a public event, so you are limited to four of them a year. It won't impact their ability to do weddings or birthday parties or all of those things. It would be more like, I want to have a concert, um, that I'm going to sell tickets to, uh, and to clarify some of those definitions.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
At the, uh, at the meeting, uh, at APC meeting, there was everybody that was there, uh, understood and was agreeable what the way it was written, so.
Thank you for those comments. Any other questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024 dash 44.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to Tippecanoe County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from MBU and RTU to PDRS.
Mr. Reynolds.
I move to hear ordinance 2024 dash 44 on first reading.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Just a petitioner here. They appear to be so. Good afternoon.
Yes, good evening. Chris Schellmann of Gutwijn Law, uh, 250 Main Street, uh, as well as John Tebel, a principal of 900 Place LLC. Uh, as many of you may know, John Tebel has done several projects throughout Lafayette and West Lafayette, uh, as well as projects in the Centennial Neighborhood where where this project is. He built the townhomes that are there. In addition, you have the project that's under construction now on Corridor Place on Fourth Street on the other end. Today, he's bringing to you another, uh, home owning opportunity with 36 townhomes that received unanimous approval from the, uh, Plan Commission last month. Uh, each unit will be 1,300 square feet, two bedrooms and two and a half baths. So they're really designed to be livable, uh, for the residents. That floor plan has had a lot of success in his other projects. And they've worked hard with the city, with the Centennial Neighborhood Association, to provide a product that you can see here that is going to be a nice new entrance for our soon to be two-way street and on that edge of the city. So there'll be, uh, the materials and the final layouts will ultimately be agreed upon between the developer and the city. So this is what the first building, uh, they've agreed on, and it'll provide additional green space, new trees, and be almost that entire block. They're leaving the, uh, older, somewhat historic, I believe it was theme, part of the old theme brewery, little house there on the corner. But the rest of the block is the old pub site parking lot and then two, quite frankly, dilapidated homes that will be demolished and replaced with these. We'd be happy to answer any questions, but respectfully, respect approval.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? I got a quick comment. I just, uh, thank you for the hard work that went into putting all this together. I love the fact that that spot is now going to become, uh, uh, housing. So thank you for.
It's been a really nice place to grow weeds for a long.
It's been a long time coming.
Glad to see you guys taking care of it.
All right, thank you. Any more comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024 dash 45.
The 2025 GLPTC budget and ordinance appropriating money for the Greater Lafayette Public Transportation Corporation is required pursuant to Indiana Code 6 dash 1.1 dash 17 dash 20.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2024 dash 45 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Smith.
Good evening. I'm Brian Smith. I'm the CEO for City Bus. Uh, thank you for, uh, the time today, and I promise to make it brief. I realize you have a full agenda. Um, just to start, we did pass out, uh, some flyers for everybody to to, uh, get some information. Um, tried to keep that that short, you know, major accomplishments for the past year. I would say it's been a good year. Um, behind that first page is, uh, some details from Indot, uh, about our annual, uh, performance. So if anybody's interested to to see those, you're welcome to to take a look. But moving on to, uh, tonight's topic, uh, the budget for 2025, we have reduced expenses by 4.9% from last year to this, uh, in the budget that we're asking for, uh, but we have some challenges ahead. So had just a few slides to share with you. First, turn it on. There we go. Uh, and run quickly through just three topics, uh, looking first historically. Uh, going back to 2020, we had a dip in our hours of service, and we've been slowly climbing out of that. Uh, you can see the red line, but we've experienced the same inflation that everyone else, uh, has been experiencing. So, uh, we've we've got a challenge as it comes up to 2026. Um, and we look towards the projected financial data. Those lines shouldn't be that far apart, just to be simple about it. Uh, the, even if we can keep that top line, the black line, uh, flat, uh, we've been using, uh, $11 million that we got from COVID money, uh, and then also, uh, some limited use of federal grant dollars for capitalized maintenance. Um, but we, there's just not enough of the federal money, uh, and the the money that we got during COVID is pretty much running out. That's how we balance the budget for this year. Um, and at the moment, we don't see anything like that happening again, uh, coming down the pike. Honestly, I hope we don't have the pandemic again, but, uh, an $11 million, uh, windfall from the Fed is is unlikely. Um, and so just going really quickly, what remedies do we have available? What can we do? Uh, just like at your house, you can reduce expenses or you can increase your income. And, uh, I'll get into some details about reducing service levels, but in terms of reducing overhead costs, I would draw your attention back to that annual report from Indot, and you can see that in terms of comparing us against our peers, we are efficient as we are now. Um, in in the time that I've been, I believe we've added about two people to the admin staff, uh, absolutely necessary to do so, and, uh, I I would say we run a pretty lean ship. So then that leads into what can you do about expenses? You can reduce your service levels. But unfortunately, what you see then is reduction in the amount that you get from fares, uh, the reduction in the ability to service the public. Uh, and if you do it simply by looking at ridership, for example, we did 4.4 million trips last year. Two, over 2 million of those trips were on the 4B. So you'd leave the 4B alone. So what's our lowest performing route? Well, that's the nine. That's the route. It's the only route that goes to IU Health. I think cutting that one is not a good idea. And also, it's probably our worst performing route, because during the bulk of the day, it only goes out there once an hour and only briefly for, uh, twice an hour. If we had better service out there, I think we actually would see better ridership, but we need the money to do that. So we are embarking on a comprehensive operations analysis, um, and trying to figure out the best way to provide service. Uh, another thing that has come up is how, you know, just like with your home budget, if you can, can't reduce expenses, can you increase your income? We have not increased our fares for 20 years. It's probably time to to at least look at increasing fares. The problem, of course, with increasing fares is that is the folks that can afford it the least that end up paying the largest percentage of their of their costs. If you compare us to our, uh, other, other transits in Indiana, the fares range from 50 cents up to a buck and a 75. Uh, I will say that Fort Wayne is currently doing a fare study, because Fort Wayne's budget shortfall is happening in 2025, not 26. And so we have tasked the the same company that is doing our comprehensive operations analysis, uh, RLS and Associates, with completing a fare study for us as well, looking at how much additional fare could bring in. There is an axiom in transit that for every 10 cents you increase fare, you reduce ridership by a certain percentage. And at at some point, it's a losing some game to increase your fares. But if it's stayed the same for 20 years, we at least need to look at those numbers. Communication and making sure that we let people know about that ahead of time so that nobody's caught unawares is very important. And balancing, I just love this picture. Uh, it really doesn't have anything to do with transit. But, uh, I, it it requires a balance, uh, and we are looking at at every different method we can find, uh, in terms of how to reduce the burden on the least, uh, the folks with the least amount of income amongst us, whether it's starting a 501(c)(3) that people can donate to so that we can help offset those costs and supporting the charities that already come to City Bus now and buy passes and and seeing if we can work out some way. That's all part of that communication. But more importantly, and and I stand before you as somebody who's worked in now four different states, is an increase in state support. In the last 10 years, there's been a a whole whopping 8% increase in the public mass transit fund. It used to grow, uh, faster than that, but was disconnected from the state sales tax and just comes out of the general fund, uh, since about 2014. And, uh, the resulting result from that is is a a low adoption for any increases. And over the last three years, uh, a 0% increase, including last year when we had actually budgeted for a, I think, a 1% or a 2% increase, and then got the news that, no, you're you're flatlined. Um, we fund transit in Indiana less than any of our surrounding states. Yep, in, uh, it 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 does take money to to keep operating, absolutely. So one of the things we're going to be doing is advocating for additional state support. And also additional local support. And, uh, as I've seen a few of you around, uh, town, I've told you that 25 was was looking good, but 26, uh, is going to be a challenge. If we don't change anything on the expense side, uh, really, which means reducing service levels, uh, somewhat drastically, will be negative $3 million if we can't find additional funds for 26. So we've got to, we've got to find those funds, uh, and with local sources, uh, the constitution caps the growth of the property tax. We are at the max allowed that and and have been since we were formed in 1970. So that's not an option to increase what we're already getting. And at the moment, there's no current legislative method to put a referendum on the ballot. In Michigan, for example, uh, Ann Arbor wanted to propose additional service. They put together a plan through a operations analysis, presented it to the public and said, if you pass this referendum, we could do this service. We don't have that kind of mechanism here where we could ask the the locality, hey, if you wanted to pay for some of this. The other, uh, sweet spot about, uh, in Michigan for that was not only would it expand the service that was available, but the state would support a third of the cost. Um, so that's another another way where the state support can can really help. The last portion for local sources is to come to the cities that you operate in. Uh, and that gets the hardest part, uh, of this question. I don't have an ask for this year, and I don't even know. Uh, we haven't gotten through enough of, uh, the next six months for me to know what I might be asking, uh, for next year. Both Indigo and Bloomington Transit, uh, currently get funding from their cities over and above their property tax money. And I know that Fort Wayne is, uh, seeking that from Fort Wayne, uh, for this year to help them with their shortfall. Um, I am not asking for that in the 2025 budget, and God willing and the creek don't rise, I won't have to ask for that uh, in the 26 budget. But I would think as a council, it's my duty to tell you in 2024 that that might happen next year, rather than telling you in 26, hey, I don't have enough money to operate. So what are we going to do to keep City Bus moving? I get to spend the next six months advocating at a national and a state level to increase the amount of funding that we get for transit. This is a nationwide issue for transits. The larger cities are looking at shortfalls in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So it's not unusual. I just came back from the after annual meeting, and, uh, this is a common theme throughout the country, um, and also throughout Indiana. Uh, we need to begin a community conversation about increased fares. And we need to continue to control costs internally. And then as the COA wraps up, uh, we expect delivery of the final report in the spring of next year. Originally, I had hoped that we'd be able to do a good, better, best, and my better and best would be akin to what we did in Michigan where, hey, if we got a little bit more money, we could do this and we could do that. And now good is going to be to keep expenses in line. If we do a reduction in service, here's what it would look like. And doing our utmost to balance the levels of service that we have between fixed route and, uh, the flex service that we have and the van pool service that we have, uh, in order to not to leave anybody out in the cold. Um, so that we can continue to offer service to those who need it the most and and really, frankly, I'd like to start offering service more to employers in the area, increasing their hiring pool. Uh, and like the, like the slide says, keeping City Bus moving forward. So thank you for your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh, our budget was submitted as part of the the resolution package. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
How are your, uh, ride shares doing, uh, that are going to the businesses like you talked about?
So we actually have one van pool running now. Uh, it it has taken a while to get it up and running. Um, but tactile engineering here on the north side of town, uh, is now running our first van pool. And, uh, our commute with Enterprise, who's our partner in this endeavor, um, has also made some significant inroads with Purdue, uh, the university in Michigan, uh, when I was in Ann Arbor. They were by far the largest user, and, uh, with the ability that this council gave us to go outside of the county, which is the only one in the state, the way the legislation is written, we're the only ones that can do it. Uh, there is some attractiveness to that. We do have two counties that have signed on for that. And they escaped me. It's Warren and Benton County. Warren and Benton County have both signed on to be, to allow us to do service in their counties. And I would anticipate with that ability to go outside of the county for, uh, and and now that we have one, it takes a while to get the ball rolling, but now that we have one going, I believe we'll we'll see.
So is it currently revenue neutral or positive or negative? Where, what do you see in as far as?
So for the the van pools, we subsidize it with federal funds, so we aren't spending any local funds for it. Um, and it will cost us $650 a month, um, to subsidize the the cost of the van pool. But tactile engineering is picking up, uh, the greater half of that, actually. Um, and then the participants pay for the fuel. So, uh, and we did partner with Purdue to get a grant, and, uh, Eli Lilly gave a, gave us a, uh, grant for the surrounding counties. So the first van pools in each of the counties, uh, will get at least one to three-year support, uh, through that grant.
Very good. Any more comments or or questions from the council or Mr. Smith? I I just want to give you a kudos. It looks like you reduced your diesel fuel consumption by 50% for 2025. So a few more of those, and I think you'll hit a home run.
Yep, uh, so CNG has a lot less volatility to it than diesel does. Uh, and we have been slowly, uh, we we have, I believe, one full diesel left, uh, in the fleet, and all the rest are hybrids, which, uh, burn more efficiently. And as we're going into the future, we're going to be burning hydrogen.
Yeah.
So.
Times are changing. Excellent.
Forward to that.
I just want to ask, uh, how is this, this fund issue that you're having, is that going to affect your fleet modernization?
Yes and no, uh, to give you a a lawyer's answer. Uh, no offense. The the money that we get from the federal government is primarily capital money and and things like for the loan-o grant for these buses couldn't be spent on operating expenses, even if we wanted to. Um, so, uh, in that sense, it it won't change. But as we look for grants to apply for in the future and continue, we, you know, we got the second loan-o grant. There is a portion of local funding that we have to come up with. And if that local funding isn't available, you know, from from our tax dollars locally, then either we we don't apply for it or we apply for less, uh, because there is a portion of it. But the the grants that we've already gotten are set, and we have the money set aside to pay for those, the local match for those. Thank you. Yep.
All right. Any more comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public? Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seeing none. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call, please?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
All right, moving on. The ordinance 2024 dash forty six.
The 2025 budget ordinance of an ordinance appropriating money for the purpose of deferring the expenses of several departments of the city government of the city of Lafayette, Indiana for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2025, including the outstanding claims and obligations and fixing a time where the same shall take effect.
Ms. Wies Williamson?
I move. We hear ordinance 2024 dash forty six.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Mr. President, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. It's my honor to be before you tonight to present our 2025 budget. I, Brian left, I feel bad about that. I felt a little bad after hearing all that. So because we're in a much different position. Of course, I didn't want to hear how good a position we're in either. So I was trying to think how to readjust my presentation. And I'm kidding. He's doing a great job and he's got, he inherited a tough problem. And we're going to need all work together, the community, to find a solution because public transportation is important. So we'll work together to to try to find that. But first of all, I'd like to thank the Controller's Office and all the department heads and the staff here at the city of Lafayette who worked very hard, being very conscientious with our taxpayers' dollars throughout the years and worked very hard then to put this budget together. As most of you know, you've been here a long time. We just don't look at last year's budget and then just say, well, what do we add or what do we subtract a little bit? We go back to zero base. We look over several years and how do we draw information from that? How do we use new technologies to reduce that? And then again, most of you are aware, it's not as really as simple as doing a one year, one budget. We have to look many years out into the future, and we have to look at the redevelopment commission budget. We have to look at the water budget, the wastewater budget, how it ties into the civil budget and how those projects that we work with through all those departments and with private investors, how do we make those dollars work and how are we most efficient with those dollars going forward? And the team does a great job putting those together. I want to thank the council for all your hard work on being pro-growth. And how do we grow the community? Because we have been able to grow the community with new companies, new jobs, new investments. And so our income has grown in several areas and our AV has grown nine point one percent this year, eleven point some percent last year. So our policies and our plans that we've laid out, the vision that we've created when it comes to economic development, infrastructure, parks and recreation, quality of life initiatives, really are working. And so we're able to do some things that maybe other communities aren't able to do. And certainly we get those things done that that we want to and still be able to treat our employees very well, do good raises, good healthcare, good benefits, which are also very important. And how do we look at sustainability? I'm pleased to announce that by the time this year's over, we'll have four solar arrays finished in the city of Lafayette. And so this budget and all the budgets we do really are a combination of what do we want to invest in, what do we want our future to look like? And how do we bring all of those dollars together in a way that makes us able to do that and to do that long term? So we weather the good days and the bad days. We've continually every year, and we will again this year, will bring the council, put money in the rainy day fund and continue to still be able to do all the services that we want to provide to our citizens. If we if we look specifically now, I know all of you have the budget in front of you. So if you want to kind of specifically look at some things, I'll go through them. I do want to give a special thanks to our controller. Jeremy Deal did a tremendous job. In fact, I don't have to say near as much probably as I usually do because his, the information that he presented to you was very thorough, very detailed, broke down in very small percentages for everybody to see. And so I do appreciate him working on that. But let's start with public safety. Public safety is always one of our largest expenditures. And it's one of, it's our number one priority to have a safe community, to keep people safe, to make sure that we're doing things that allows us to continue to grow. And people want to live here and businesses want to locate here. So when you look at the general fund, the total general fund for 2025 will be 54.7. I'm rounding off some of the numbers here just to make it easier. And about 47.3 million of that is police, fire and animal control. So that that shows you that the largest portion of our general fund is public safety. And that's something nobody else is going to do, right? No private sector, people are going to do police, fire and animal control. And that's one of the main functions government is supposed to to do for our citizens. And so that again is one of the largest part of the general fund. But as I said, as you know, we continue to invest heavily in our parks and recreation in sustainability. This year, last year, you approved a position for a new sustainability coordinator for the city of Lafayette. And that position is underway now and working, and we're very, very happy about that. As I said, our pro-growth policies have allowed our assessed valuation to continue to grow, which actually stabilizes our tax rate. For the last two years, we've actually lowered our tax rate. By the time this whole process is done, we've actually been able to lower our staff, the staff tax rate. And what we're going to do this year, we should be able to just keep it right there stable, which is, which is very good. So we're very proud that we're able to do that, even creating a few new positions, giving good raises. We did get some really good news on our healthcare. It only went up about 1.3%. So that's very good. I can tell you that the new clinic that we started is a huge hit with our employees and their families. We're getting tremendous usage out of that. It's saving our employees a lot of healthcare dollars. And that's exactly what we were hoping it would do. And, you know, we need to get a full year data and look at it. But I'm confident already from looking at it, it's a good dollar value return for what we're getting out of it, the money it puts back in our employees' pockets and what we're able to do by mitigating some of our other costs through our plan for people not using urgent care, the emergency room, some of those things that those numbers should balance out very nicely for us. So we're certainly pleased with that. Just to go over a few other highlights that we talked about, the overall budget, like I said, I'm almost glad Brian not here. The overall budget for this year is $97,727,659. And that's about an 8.4 million dollar increase over last year's budget.
That's 900, I'm sorry, 97 million.
What did I say? Thousand? Yeah, that, yeah, that won't stretch very far, will it? Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, that, that we, if we could do the other than that, we'd be pretty good. So that's about 8.4 million greater than in 2024. And I want to break that down a little bit for you so you kind of know exactly where they're at. Jeremy did some great notes on it, but just I think it's important to do it tonight in a public meeting also. So about 6.1 million of that is related to salaries and all of the personnel costs that goes along with all of our employees. So that's, that's a portion of that. Also in that is, well, that's a portion of it. And the other portion of the 6.1 is you'll notice some debt service in there, a debt service placeholder. What we're working to do is, because we've been able to lower the tax rate, specifically in the parks, I wanted to get some money. We need to finish the primate exhibit. It's been a long time since we've had an adequate primate exhibit. Do some other things at the park. And so we're going to pass a small five-year bond to be able to do that and some other work on the Colombian Park Master Plan. So when you add those two together, that comes up to the 6.1 part of that increase, which only leaves about 2.3 million for all the other departments in the city for all the things that we're trying to do. So I wanted to explain that increase a little bit. But again, we're in a good position to be able to do that, keep the tax rate flat, only have to do it for a few years, give the raises. And Jeremy, you've talked that, you know, we're looking at probably putting at least a million dollars in the rainy day fund. So we're in a good financial position to do those things, to pave a lot of roads, continue to do that and to build the infrastructure that we need to build. So we'll go on to the next page there of some of the things. I've talked a little bit about 1.3% on on the insurance premium. We're almost finished up with Humane Society of Greater Lafayette. As you know, the city is a substantial funder of that, but it's turned out great. I think most of you have been out there to see it. That's a great investment. And Cindy's been a huge part of that. And she updated me, I mean, the way they're, what do you say, 11 animals in one? One week they adopted. I mean, they are really doing a good job out there. So we're very, very happy about that. Our incomes have increased in a lot of areas, including Loet and our incomes for Edit and Coet and those types of things because we are creating jobs, we are expanding, we are growth. So we haven't, we haven't seen a contraction, and so we're very pleased that those continue to grow. But we are being careful. We're making sure that we look out into the future, that we put money in the rainy day fund, that we do those things that will keep us on very solid financial footing. Just some updates, most of you will get a invitation here. Hopefully in the next month or so, the Public Works Campus is just about finished out off McCarty Lane. It's a wonderful facility that's going to make us more efficient, more effective. It's much closer to the center of the city instead of down off of Third Street for when we deploy trucks and other vehicles to provide city services. So that's just about done. So, you know, when you think about that over the years, what we've been able to accomplish with, you know, the new baseball stadium, the new public safety building, remodeling of this side of City Hall to bring the fire department administration and to have a true public safety campus and the other departments that will go over there, the new public works campus like type. But we've been able to do the projects that needed to be done to keep us moving forward, to keep providing services, same time, lower the tax rate and keep us on sound financial footing. And I want to give the council and all the department heads and everybody a lot of credit. There are not many places that are doing that. And so we're very excited about what that means for the future. That's kind of the highlights. Like I said, Jeremy did a great job with his paperwork that he sent you. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just when do you think that the fire will be able to be in there?
Well, we're going to move everybody once everything's done, right? So we are hoping by the end of the year, everybody will start moving in and then people will start moving over. We're in the process right now redoing utility billing office also. And then the clerk's office gets redone and the controller's office gets redone. So there'll be jockeying for a few months, once this site's done, but we'll get people moved, open up space. We kept the Tempest Home Building up at Seventh and South, which I'm very glad that we did. And we've got that set up. So like now, that's where utility billing is is operating out of. So we have that flexibility to do those, to do those things. And Andy and his team with the technology has done a great job keeping us very up to date, very progressive. We're starting to use AI more and how that can help us be efficient and save money also. So hopefully by the first of the year, they'll be moved in and we'll jockey people around for a few months.
Having lived through them, I know it's not easy.
Yeah.
All right. Any more comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call?
Blinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024 dash 47.
An ordinance fixing the salaries of the appointed officers and employees of the city of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2025, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments.
Mr. Blinker?
Moving here, ordinance 2024 dash 47 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. The raises, as Cindy indicated, these are for the civilian personnel. We're pleased to announce that we're able to give a 5% raise. We feel that maintaining and keeping good quality employees is one of our our highest responsibilities to provide the services. And so we are pleased that we're able to offer this 5% raise. And like I said, along with what would be almost a negligible increase in any of their insurance costs and actually decreased by the use of of the clinic. And so we're very pleased. We think this really does help move people forward. And they actually will see more disposable income, and we would appreciate your approval.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public? Seeing and hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call?
Blinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024 dash 48.
An ordinance fixing the salaries of the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments of the city of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2025.
Mr. Reynolds?
Move to hear ordinance 2024 dash 48 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, thank you. This is for our sworn personnel. As most of you know from the discussions last year, we have sat down and took a comprehensive look across the whole state, looking at information that we received from perf and other sources, worked with the Fraternal Order of Police, worked with the Fire Department's Union, worked with the administrations of the police and fire departments to try to come up. We were really coming up with a two-year rates wage structure that we thought was appropriate to get our public safety officials where they needed to be. And so we were last year, if you remember, we actually gave an 8% raise to police and fire to get them bumped up. And I told you at that time, my goal was to get to seven this year if we could. We were going to try to do 15. After looking at it and going through everything and looking at some of the other things, we're in contract negotiations right now, we're going to give a 6.5. And I've told the police and fire departments that, and it's been very well received. So we got, you know, very, very close to where we had talked about getting to. And that's really, quite honestly, that's how close we looked at this and how hard the Controller's Office and everybody works to make those half and quarter percent decisions that you need to make over long term. And so, but I've talked to everybody and I've been told it's been very well received. And with the eight last year, they're very thrilled. That's 14.5 in two years. And we feel that gets us to where, you know, we we need to be. And we're happy to be again, happy to be in a position where we can do that.
Very good. Any comments or questions from the council? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none and seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024 dash 49.
An ordinance fixing the salaries of elected officials of the city of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2025.
Mr. Deal? I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, jumped ahead a little bit.
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2024 dash 49 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Deal, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Jeremy Deal, City Controller. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of council, this ordinance proposes biweekly pay amounts for our elected officials for the 2025 budget year. In recognition of their experience, dedication and leadership roles involving significant decision-making that impacts the entire community, this ordinance proposes pay increases for elected officials. And in their full-time capacity in those leadership roles, the mayor and city clerk are recommended for a six and a half percent pay increase commensurate with that of public safety officials. And for the important legislative and fiscal roles fulfilled by our council members, they're recommended for a 5% pay increase commensurate with that of most city employees, the boards and commissions. And I respectfully request your approval of this ordinance.
Any comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call?
Blinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to one.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024 dash five zero.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Lafayette, Indiana to make and fund a loan as evidenced by the taxable economic development revenue note, series 2024, Anvil 26 project, and authorizing and approving other actions in connection therewith.
Ms. Wies Williamson?
I move. We hear and approve ordinance number 2024 dash 50 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Carson, good evening.
Good evening, Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director here for the city. I'm excited about this new infill housing project that we'll have before you tonight. This is on one of, on some of the last remaining parcels of the former home hospital. This has been vacant for quite. This has been vacant for quite some time and been blighted and such. So again, we're excited about this. First, I'm going to bring up Ironman Properties, the developer for this project who will explain the project, followed by our legal counsel, Scott Frisell with Craig DeValt, and then followed by Greg Balsano from Baker Tilly, to explain how this forgivable loan will work. And then sure, after that, the mayor would like to make some comments as well too. So I'll turn it over to Joe Blake now with Ironman Properties.
Thank you. There we go. My name's Joe Blake. I'm one of the owners of Ironman Properties. We're a multifamily real estate developer located here in Lafayette, Indiana. Wanted to tell you just a little bit about the project this evening. Let's see, can I? There we go. There we go. So as I said, we're a multifamily housing developer. We operate within just this region, the northwest part of Indiana. And part of our vision is to see smaller and mid-sized communities have investment from multifamily housing in their downtowns in order to increase the revitalization efforts in one, in many of the communities around Lafayette. We're enjoying a robust economy, but we also enjoy doing projects in smaller communities as well. Project I want to talk to you about is at 2600 South Street and talk with you a little bit about the concept. It is on the northwest corner, excuse me, the northeast corner of 26th Street and State Road 26 or South Street. And hence we, we were the developers of Anvil 38 out on State Road 38. And since it sat at the corner of 26 and 26, it almost had to have that name. So we decided on Anvil 26. As Dennis said, it, it sets on parcels that were former home hospital there, such as south of the IU Health parking garage that's there. Uh, the project itself is sits on 1.3 acres, 91,000 square foot building, 78 multifamily units. You can see the unit mix there. We have 103 parking spaces that we're providing. 93 of them are on site and 10 of them will be along 27th Street. And as noted, it's walkable to parks and other community amenities. It's, the property is zoned MRU, multifamily residential urban. And the variances that were allowed for the project were 93 parking spaces instead of 122 and 56,000 square foot on the lot size, and those are granted back in May. Uh, this is a diagram of the project. It, it is a four-story building. I'll show you an elevation of it in just a little bit. The project initially started out with the hope of sharing some of the parking in the IU Health parking garage. And that didn't work out. So what we ended up doing is putting a podium parking area below the building on the first floor. And, and then three floors of multifamily up above, and then there's some parking behind the building as well between the building and the parking garage. Uh, you'll note here that the entrance to the properties off of 26th Street, which is a signaled street, we intentionally, we had several conversations with the neighbors, community meetings to find out what their interests were. And one of the desires was to not have any access on State, excuse me, on 27th Street where we have residential. Uh, this is a view of the building from the, from 27th Street and, and South Street. You'll note that the first floor, we intentionally designed it to look like residential on the first floor as well, even though that's a parking deck. We wanted it to feel like it fit in the neighborhood. And so that's why it's designed with the windows and the doors there on the first floor. The project amenities, it is, it is market rate housing. So it is a, I don't like the word luxury necessarily, but it is, it is quality housing that will sit on the property. You know, part of the, part of the appeal for this is just creating density, housing density where it's needed. And I'll talk a little bit about how it, it is efficient in the use of existing utilities and, and amenities in the city. It is located on a bus route, actually two bus routes adjacent to Columbia Park, Murdoch Park. And the building, you can see some of the amenities there, stainless steel appliances, hard surface countertops, that sort of thing. You know, part of the challenge that we have as a community is providing additional housing. And the housing study that was done a couple of years ago suggested that housing was one of the greatest needs in regards to attracting industry to the community. And I think that's true, not only for Lafayette, but it's true across the state of Indiana. There are challenges in every community in attract, in a, in building housing in order to, to attract jobs to the area. This gives you a little bit of an idea of the demand for housing. It was suggested in that study, the demand for housing from 23 to 30 was about 11,000 units. Uh, also it just creates local jobs. We'll have employees here in this building, full-time employees. It also creates short-term construction jobs as well. Project is noted there is about just under $19 million. Uh, the property tax increases is obvious. This, these lots have been sitting empty. Somebody mentioned growing weeds. This, this is another lot was doing a pretty good job of growing weeds. And so we're privileged to be able to convert it into something that will be a nice amenity. Uh, I didn't mention earlier, but I do think this is an important piece of property just for, for the gateway into the, the downtown from the east. Um, local impact on reuse of infrastructure, you know, water sewer, storm sewer, fiber optics, bus routes, all of that. This, this property is perfectly suited for all of that. And just a, a little bit about our company, Ironman Properties is what I call a fully integrated real estate developer. We do this, we make presentations to the community, we, we present all of our own develops, developments. Uh, we hire local engineers and architects to design the building for us. And then we have our own construction operation as well. So we'll build it and when it's done, we operate it. So it's, it's ours from start to finish. So if you have complaints, you come see me. Um, so, and as I said, we're a local community, uh, community-based developer. My partner and I are from Lafayette here. All of our construction team is local, our operations team is local. So this is really important to us. Every project we do is, it means something to us and we're highly invested in it. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have about the project.
Any comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public? We still have a couple more people coming. Okay. No worries.
What are you basing the rent on when you say, uh, because, uh, SIA just kind of got an agreement taking and start hiring people for 18 to 20 dollars an hour. Now I'm telling you, I talk to young people every day and I travel around the city. My little race, I listen to people. These grown people, 25, 27 years old, says, I had to move back in with my mom because I'm only making $20 an hour. I can't afford $1,800 a month. Is your rent going to be that way? If it is, it's nothing else in the community community.
Yeah. So we haven't, we haven't established rents just yet as to what, what they'll be, but they'll be market rate. So it won't be vastly different from everything else that's in the community right now. So it, it's.
Rate based on, then you have to go to a wage base. Now there's a lot of people around here that says we have some good paying places. Well, I can tell you right now. The aluminum plant is as good as it was years ago. Caterpillar probably isn't as good. And I know there were several places that one company moved in out there by Sam's. From Ohio, three or four years ago. They got their raise, their wages is down what they was paying four years ago. So if you keep building these nice houses, they're pretty. I wouldn't have one, but they're pretty. But, and I wouldn't pay $18 a month over here. But the problem I'm saying, the problem I'm hearing from young people, I have to move back in with daddy because I can't afford my car insurance, my car payment and my rent. I ain't got no money for food. So if you're building houses that I'm, I follow making $20 an hour. That's $100 a week. That's 30, $200 a month. If you're going to take 1,800 of that for rent. Yeah, I give me bikes.
So there, there are, there are federal and state programs for rent restricted housing, but that's not what this project is. This is a market rate housing project.
If, if we can, can we, can we move on with the presentation? Pearl, we appreciate your comments. Until the presentation is over, we'll ask for public comment again. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Scott Frisell. I'm an attorney with Craig DeValt and we are serving as special counsel to the city for the financing of the Anvil 26 project. So before you this evening is ordinance 2024 dash 50, which approves the financing of the Anvil 26 project with a forgivable loan structure in an amount not to exceed 2.5 million dollars. The actual loan amount is anticipated to be 2,080,000. Um, as Mr. Blake mentioned, Ironman Properties has requested the city issue and fund a forgivable loan to help support its development of this multifamily project, which will consist of approximately 78 units, costing approximately 18.42 million dollars. Indiana law authorizes the city to make direct loans to developers to finance these economic development facilities. The city's Economic Development Commission has already met and approved the financing of this project. The city's RDC also met and established a new TIF allocation area called the Anvil 26 allocation area for this project site. It also authorized the use of TIF from the consolidated CRESE and central allocation areas along with the TIF that will be generated from this project site to fund this forgivable loan. So this forgivable loan structure is being pursued to support the project in lieu of a typical bond financing. One, because of the current TIF balances, which Mr. Belsano from Baker Tilly will present on shortly. And then the second is just due to the high interest rate environment we're in. If we issued a bond, the, the bond debt service would need to have all the TIF pledged to support the payments on that bond over the full 25-year life of the allocation area. So doing this forgivable loan structure provides the most benefit to the city to be able to capture the full increment that's generated over the 25-year life of this allocation area. And then the city can use those funds to further economic development activities within this TIF allocation area and the Economic Development District. The ordinance also approves the form of the loan agreement and authorizes the officers of the city to take such further actions as necessary or desirable to finalize this forgivable loan. Under the loan agreement, the city will agree to fund the loan to the borrower in six installments. Uh, those installments will be drawn, the first one beginning on August 1st, 2025 and following the borrower's acquisition of the site and demolition of existing improvements on the site, which my understanding has already occurred. So those, the first six of the loan proceeds can be drawn as soon as August 1st, 2025. The next would be February 1st, 2026 and following the borrower certification that at least 50% of the construction has been completed. Thereafter, on August 1st, 2026, the borrowers can draw another sixth following a final certificate to occupy the project. And thereafter, on February 1st, 2027, August 1st, 2027, and then finally on February 1st, 2028, they can draw the remaining three sixths. Uh, each drawl and loan will be reflected on the series 2024 note, which will be payable by the borrower if it does not satisfy the conditions under the loan agreement. The loan and note will then mature no later than December 31st, 2018. And at that time it will either be repayable or forgiven in accordance with the terms of the loan agreement. Uh, as part of, as part of the loan, the borrower will also enter into a participation agreement with the redevelopment commission, which provides that if the project is sold within an eight-year period, the borrower will share the sale proceeds, the net sale proceeds with the redevelopment commission to reimburse for this loan. The reimbursement amount decreases over time. So the first two years it's a hundred percent. Years three and four, it drops to 75%. Years five and six, 50%. And then finally year seven and eight, 25%. So the city would be able to recapture some of the incentives it provides to the project if it is sold within that eight-year period. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none? Thank you, sir. Bond counsel, are you here? Financial advisor, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, council members. Thank you for having me here today. Uh, Greg Balsano with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, uh, serving as municipal advisor on this transaction. Also assist kind of the redevelopment commission with various financial matters. And one of the just discussed, I handed this out before the meeting here, this small few-page packet that goes through kind of the TIF estimates and different things that we're going to discuss here today about this Anvil 26 project. And so I'll start on page two. I just want to give a sense of what potential TIF you could see from this, this development here. And you can see we're estimating an assessed value of around 14.2 million dollars, which would generate about $284,000 annually in TIF revenues. Um, as a reminder, this is at the 2% property tax cap, rental residential properties do sit at that cap. So any tax rate above 2% is not paid due to those cap levels. So that's why that 284 there, you can see some circuit breaker credit as well on that calculation. Uh, just want to note that this is a part of a new allocation area, as Mr. Frisell mentioned, the Anvil 26 area. That will give that area a 25-year life. So that TIF area will have 25 years from the date that this loan is issued to be able to generate this revenue from this development. Um, as Scott Frisell mentioned, this is going to be paid out over approximately six payments, three in three years roughly equal. Um, and looking at that and just kind of want to take a, a look at your revenues in this economic development area over the past few years, just to show the kind of growth that we've been seeing within the TIF. Back in, back in 2018, we were looking at around 9.8 million of TIF revenues in the economic development area. That has increased in 2023 to 13.8 million. So substantial increases over that five-year period. And in 2024, we estimate that that amount will be around 15.7 million dollars of TIF revenue from the area that's going to go and help pay this loan. On the next page, page three, you can see kind of the proposed schedule of that $2,080,000 loan payment. Um, you could see there that that's spread over six payments roughly equal at about $690,000 a year or about $345,000 annually. On the right-hand side of that page, you could see we generated, what, what does that mean in present value dollars for the developer? And that's around $1,850,000 in kind of a present value format to them. As Mr. Frisell mentioned, what this does is it does kind of eliminate some of the bond financing costs that would be associated if you were to do a long-term transaction, things like a taxable interest rate, uh, different financing costs like a, a bond purchaser would require a fee to purchase those bonds and things associated like that. Our last schedule here, page four, just illustrates over that 25-year term, the revenues and expense that could be seen. So you could see about 6.25 million dollars in revenue as we estimated on the prior schedules. And again, that 2.1 million roughly of total loan payments, that includes kind of some of the cost of issuance for doing the transaction in there. Um, leaving around about in 2035, if you're looking at a gross dollar for dollar basis, that area would reimburse the cost of doing this loan. And then after that, you'd have that kind of money to be able to do future projects and, and incur more development in the area like we've seen over the past few years. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the, the financing side.
Any comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public? Thank you. Let's move on to a roll call. Madam Clerk?
President.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I'll, I'll make it brief, but I appreciate the council support. These are, these are difficult projects to do. Infill projects are very difficult to do. That lot's been sitting empty, just like the other project. And again, I want to thank Dennis Carson and his team to working together, get that pub lot put together and to get this lot put together. It is going to create housing. The cost of housing, like I said, it's, it's almost a $19 million project. That's what a tuba four and plywood and drywall and stuff, it's, it's, it is very tough to do to make these work. But the home hospital site is just about all redeveloped and quite nicely. If you go up there, there's been some apartments built, there's been some single-family homes built. We have this opportunity to do this. Uh, as you know, we have the nice assisted living facility uh, there. And so it really has people working together and we've been involved. It's redeveloped nice. And this is a good spot. Murdoch's a good school, Sunnyside. I know if Barry has his way, he's going to build another boys and girls club right up there. The park across the street is beautiful. There's a new playground. I mean, this is a nice place for people to live, a walkable place for people to live. And it is on two bus routes. Uh, you know, we've worked with Ironmen before out on Anvil 38. It's a great project, good for Ivy Tech. They're doing some great things in Delphi and Frankfurt, and they all do live here. So, um, these are not easy to get done. We have, because it didn't work out with IU to use the parking garage. So this has been reinvented a couple of times to try to make something on their work. Uh, and I think we've gotten there and it's something we can pay off in just a few years. And as you heard, uh, and we're going to start doing these in all of them. If people sell stuff within so many years, they owe a certain amount of money back too. And so you'll, you'll see that be a more common clause in, in, in our agreements and stuff. So we'd appreciate, uh, your support on this and help move this forward and get that corner looking something really, really nice.
Thank you, Mayor. Any more comments or questions? All right, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call, please?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Order passes eight to zero.
All right, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty one.
An ordinance for an additional appropriation Economic Development Income Tax Fund number twenty ninety.
Mr. Clinker.
Move here ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty one, I'm first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Deal.
Good evening again. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this ordinance proposes an additional appropriation from our Economic Development Income Tax Fund for the current twenty twenty four budget year, and that is in the amount of one million dollars. So the purpose of this request is to ensure that we have adequate construction resources to complete and uh fulfill our financial obligations for projects that are currently underway. Um, the, the wonderful uh Yaman Society for Greater Lafayette facility that the mayor uh mentioned earlier is one project that is substantially complete now, but um my last communication with, with the county was that uh the city should expect invoices to the tune of another one point two million dollars before the, the year's over. So there's that outstanding as well as significant paving work that's currently being done late in the season by Milestone and Reeve Riley at uh various projects or locations. Our uh, our own competent street department employees did a uh quite a bit of paving this year um on some smaller residential areas. And we used the other resources uh from the motor vehicle highway funds, the local road and street fund, and the uh local option highway use tax fund or wheel tax fund. So we do have some remaining resources there to address outstanding paving obligations. But this appropriation is essentially to provide insurance that we have all that we need to uh to meet outstanding obligations. I think this is a conservative request, and ideally I will not use this entire amount. But uh nonetheless, I ask for an even one million dollars just in case.
Easy number to remember. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council over the one million dollars? Comments or questions? Seeing none, hearing none? Uh, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call, please?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
And this particular ordinance is subject to a public uh hearing, which we will have on the tenth of October at six, I'm sorry, the tenth of November, the fourth of November at six oh one uh PM as well. Can I get a motion for that?
Moved.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. All favoring, seeing both say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. That is for the public hearing part, portion in November. Thank you for keeping me straight. All right, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty two.
An ordinance of the city of Lafayette authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of construction of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to municipal waterworks of said city, providing for the safeguarding of those interests of the owners of said bonds. Other matters connected therewith include the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds and repealing ordinance, ordinances inconsistent herewith.
Mr. Reynolds?
Move to hear ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty two.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor.
All right. Uh, as you may recall, late last year, the city of Lafayette was awarded for a four hundred thousand dollar forgivable grant from the Indiana Finance Authority to conduct an inventory of lead service lines. I am pleased to announce that the IFA has now approved an additional five million dollars of funding consisting of a two point five million dollar forgivable grant and a two fo- two point five million dollar interest free loan. This funding will support uh the city's ongoing efforts to comply with the Environmental Protection Agency's twenty twenty one lead and copper rule revisions. More details on this important work will be shared soon. As a reminder, the city's most recent Consumer Confidence Report confirms that there is no naturally occurring lead in the city's water system. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our bond counsel, Hans Steck, and our financial advisor Jennifer, financial advisor Jennifer Wilson, who will provide further insights to the ordinance and financials.
You're in the back, I wasn't sure.
Mr. President, Madam Clerk and counselors. Um, the ordinance in front of you is fairly straightforward and simple. It is tailored specifically to an SRF loan. SRF standing for the State Revolving Fund uh that's operated by the Indiana Finance Authority. Um, you will see in it, if you've read it, there's an eight million dollar number. That's a not to exceed, as Jennifer uh reminded me. If, if they find some extra money rolling around, we hate to not be able to grab it just because we put five million in, in the ordinance. So we gave ourselves a little cushion, but it is at this point expected to be five million dollars. And as um your city attorney mentioned, it's um, it comes in two components. There's a, for lack of a better term, a regular bond for two and a half million that you will need to repay out of the existing uh charges and rates of the, of the waterworks. Uh, however, there's no interest. So it's kind of like those ads you see that are too good to be true, that, you know, but it is. Uh, that's their program. The ba- the ban, it gets even better. Ban stands for bond anticipation notes. Um, usually you issue those when you're expecting then to issue long term bonds a year, two, or three years later. Here, it's a ban because under the federal regulations, it creates a situation that the Indiana SRF can forgive that loan. So you've got two and a half million dollars that's going to be not only inter- the ban's interest free, but then it's going to be forgiven. So you're going to get five million dollars for paying back two and a half million. Um, and it's a nice tool in, in the city's initiative to have. Other than that, um, there is a, you, if you've looked at it, you notice there's a financial assistance agreement attached as an exhibit. Uh, that will be the document that the city will sign with the state revolving fu- fund that will govern the loan. If you look through it, that they talk about the forgivable ban and so on and so forth. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's, that's really the core of what we have here. Now, I'll turn it over to Jennifer. If you've got any number of questions, she's the one to answer.
Thank you.
Hello, Jennifer Wilson with Crow, uh, financial advisor to the water utility. Uh, Hans pretty much hit all the major issues on it. The, the number two hit though is we're going to pay this back over twenty years. So it's about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year payment back for that two point five million dollar portion. Uh, we don't need to get IURC, Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission approval for this. There's a statute in there that allows us to do this without having to go through uh the, the requirements of, of that. Um, we just had to require that you had sufficient coverage to pay back this loan, which you do. So uh, I'd be happy to answer any of the number of questions.
All right, very good. Any comments or questions from the council? Yes, ma'am.
Specific to lead or all infrastructure for water work?
Th- this is related to the lead service line inventory project ongoing.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public? Easy crown, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call, please?
Here?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Order passes eight to zero.
All right, moving on, Resolutions twenty twenty four dash twenty four.
A resolution of the common council of the city of Lafayette, Indiana, approving the exchange of real property.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, I'm moved that we hear and approve Resolution twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four dash twenty four.
Thank you. Counselor.
All right. Uh, this resolution details a proposed land swap that will benefit our city. Uh, the city currently owns about fifteen acres of land near the Hoosier Heartland Corridor that was originally purchased in twenty ten for a potential well field. However, due to high infrastructure costs and limited water volume, the well field project was deemed not feasible. The land currently serves no purpose for the city. Meanwhile, a company called Redtail Properties LLC owns about fifteen acres immediately adjacent to our new Public Works Campus on McCarty Lane. Uh, this land is perfect for relocating our city's brush dump, which needs a new home by February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, when our current temporary lease arrangement expires. It could also be used for the future expansion of the Public Works Campus and/or to address other community needs. Uh, as required by state statute, each property had two independent appraisals ordered. The average of the city appraisals for the city's land is four hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars, while the average of the uh appraisals for the red tail land is six hundred and thirty six thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, even though it's fifteen acres and fifteen acres, the land uh that is ours doesn't have utilities. It's not in the middle of town, which helps explain the difference in the two values. Uh, the Board of Works has already uh issued its approval of the exchange, and then we did conduct the required public hearing earlier this evening. Uh, the resolution that is in front of you tonight approves the exchange of these properties. The city will pay the difference in value uh to Redtail at closing. Really, this exchange is a win win, providing a much needed location for our brush dump and potential for future growth while uh offloading unused city property. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we got any questions from the council? Comments or questions?
What are the plans for all of this vegetation?
Well, it will.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, are you talking about the fifteen in town?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we, we will use what we need immediately when we, we do the brush dump. But, but once this is all done, we'll look at a comprehensive strategic way how to lay it out, set it up for future development, or if there are other community needs, we will lay that out and we'll, we'll set it up so it's operationally efficient. There, he's got a lot of his stuff still to move out there, and it'll, we'll have to put in a road and we'll do some things. But acquiring this property right next to the Public Works Campus is, you know, we're really, it, we're helping ourselves now with the brush dump and stuff, and we're really setting up people to be successful in the future if they, city needs additional room out there and stuff. I mean, there was an easy entrance, we could put a small bridge over the ditch if we had to for small trucks, get people back and forth. I mean, we need to get this under um, you know, under control. We're looking at other areas uh for our water resources, as most of you know. And so this is a good swap for us to be able to facilitate the transactions.
Is it's adjacent to the R U L or L U R? I can't English today. The L U R ditch area.
The L, the, the L U R ditch?
Yeah.
Is that, there is a ditch that goes down between the two properties. I don't know the letter designation of that, but there is a ditch that goes down between the-
My question was, is the ditch part of the property?
The ditch is part of the property that we actually already own.
Already own, yeah, we already maintain that stuff, yes.
All right, any more comments or questions from the council? Comments or questions from the public, Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four. Seeing and hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to reports of sustaining committees. Reports of special committees, reports by the mayor.
Quick, thank you, everybody, for all your hard work tonight. I hope that you've seen, and we sent it to everyone, but maybe y'all haven't seen the news or looked at your uh emails yet, but we're pleased to announce, we have been able to talk about this before, but uh, we can as of today, that uh Sustania has chosen Lafayette as their site for the new approximately four hundred million dollar facility, which will be one of the largest in the, in the, you, maybe the largest in the US. And so we're extremely excited about this. We've been working on it for a couple of years now, so uh it's, it's been a long process, but it's, it'll be very good for Premiant. They're going to be partnering with Premiant, who will be supplying uh the material that they need to create an environmentally friendly uh product that will replace fossil fuel based products and clothing and apparel and footwear and plastic bottles and things like this. So uh, just a, a, a great win for the community. It'll create a lot of construction jobs while it's being built. It'll create a lot of permanent jobs after it's done, and it will help other companies reduce their carbon footprint uh when they're making materials and products that they're making. So it's an environmental win really for the whole, whole country. So we are excited, and I want to thank Dennis Carson, Greater Lafayette Commerce, Tippi New County, everybody that, that worked together. You know, she's always bossing me around, that's what it is. Either here at home, it doesn't matter where. Always feel at home. So I just wanted to thank the council again uh because of pro-growth, uh, working hard, quality of life amenities, financially were very sound. People know that, uh, you know, that was a big factor in helping us because it was a, a global competition. I mean, they could have went anywhere in the world and chose us, so thank you very much for that. Then just a reminder, tomorrow at ten o'clock, down at Second Columbia is the groundbreaking for the John Purdue Block. It's about a fifty five million dollar project going into downtown, really neat. Uh, will do a lot for that area as we continue uh to grow our downtown, which quite frankly is vibrant. And uh, some of you have been here long enough, long time, the whole twenty years. I think we have nine, nine new buildings downtown in the last twenty years. And if you try to think about downtown without those buildings, it's really hard to even imagine now. But uh, again, kudos to Dennis Carson and his team. We're moving in a very positive direction. So if you have time, swing by for the uh groundbreaking tomorrow. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, any miscellaneous and new business? Reports of the councilmen?
I have one.
And women. Yes, sir. Mr. Brown.
Well, as no, as probably none of you know, uh, in nineteen seventy seven, I was, I was awarded a degree in political science from Northern Illinois University. Uh, fast forward to last week, uh, the political science department asked me to come back to that school to address a uh state and local government class. And I, uh, having to do with my experiences here on the council and how in the city of Lafayette and how the place is run and all that. Oh, my goodness, I gave them an earful. I talked to them about, about the mayor, about his, his administration, about you guys, about your legislation. And they were completely, they were absolutely blown away at the fact that we, we do governance here. We govern. We don't squabble a lot about politics and all that because we know that nobody cares about the ideological purity of your political philosophy if the trash ain't getting picked up. We get it done. And as I said, they were quite impressed.
Thank you. Did you record that, my chance? Could you share that with the council? Awesome. That's great news. So I do want to remind everybody uh on the council that we do have a public uh meeting, October tenth at five PM for all the budgets, uh, so.
Report.
I'm sorry?
I had another report before you started.
Oh, very, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, uh, y'all know that every year the Lafayette Fire Department does the fire safety show uh at Sunnyside. And uh, I'm proud to be still a part of it after twenty six years. And uh, a little early, uh, we do the nine thirty, ten o'clock, and then the one o'clock. But on Wednesday, we'll be doing a six o'clock public. So anybody that can come on Wednesday, we would uh.
This Wednesday?
Yeah, this Wednesday night.
And that is at the Long Center?
No, it's at uh Sunnyside. And we done about, I think, close to eight hundred kids today, but uh, that's, that's about what it runs every day. So it's a good program. So uh.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you sharing that. Don't forget about the October tenth uh public meeting, please. Um, any more reports from the council before I move on? Public comment? Seeing none, public comments?
Pearl speaking, nine twenty three South Twenty Second Street. I feel kind of out of place here because I don't see no citizens in here. I hear a lot of complaints every day in this town. And I talk to a lot of people, young and old. Number one complaint of a man that walks five miles a day in my neighborhood. There's a sidewalk that needs to be replaced down there. Now, the city has replaced six sections of sidewalk for Linda Orton, who is a strong Republican, worked for the Republican Party, and they replaced her sidewalk twice. Now, we can't get no help down there to get a sidewalk up there for that guy to walk. We can't get no help down there to put a couple speed bumps in there to save a child's life. Now, one of these days, there's going to be blood on every one of your hands. There's going to be blood on your hands because all we need is a couple of speed bumps that will stop them speeders.
What, what street are you referring to, Pearl?
Nine twenty, nine twenty three, nine twenty three, South Twenty, Twenty Second.
Okay. And, and this is the property we spoke about on the phone?
Yes.
That we discussed.
It is bad, it is nasty. It is bad. It is nasty. It's grass and it's broke up. Now you got all this money to spend on these people up here as homeless. Why are they putting it into our economy? Nothing. I feel us people that's paid taxes since, 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 I've been around here since seventy six. And I, I, I differ with the mayor. Downtown looks pretty. Our shopping centers are closing up and you're trying to put these ordinance on people living out there. Order five violations on my street. One person got a ticket this, this week. One. Now I'm telling you that you guys don't believe in equal rights. Your selective force enforcement got you in trouble in two thousand and ten. It's going to get you in trouble again. Got you in trouble in two thousand and thirteen. Selective enforcement does, uh, work. And your police officers or whoever is supposed to be doing it are not using their discretion. They're turning their head. Now you let a kid get killed down on my street and I'm going to send a pizza to each one of your houses if I don't deliver it to you.
Earl, you're allowed to say your peace of mind, but I'm going to request that you stop threatening the council, please.
I'm not threatening, you better, you better talk to the mayor. And I want you to tell, I want to tell you something. Letting the motorcycles park on the streets and TikTok and all these bars and giving these bars half of my sidewalk and wanting to complain about me if I want to park my car in front, in my front yard where I pay taxes on. A sidewalk isn't walk on. And the yard's the yard. You, you, you won't raise hell about TikTok or one of these bars, but you will holler about the citizen. Please do something besides sit there and look eager.
Thanks for the comments, Earl. Earl.
There's no other public comment.
Any more public comment? Uh, with that being said, Mr. Clinker?
Move for adjournment.
Second?
All in favor, say most say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you, everybody.